Welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 5th, 2025.
Helen, is your, Helen, is your mic on?
It's also on to me.
Hello? Here we go. First time's a charm. Welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 20, or November 5th, 2025. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Alberhaski here. Gribovich here. Hartley. Henderson. Johnson.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Sorenson, oh, sorry, he is not, is no longer on the commission. Stahlnecker.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, first agenda item on here was to look at the minutes from last meeting. Were there any revisions or questions on the minutes? Otherwise, I'd take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this point in time, we invite anyone from the public who would like to come up and speak to any item that is not already on the agenda at all. And then seeing none, we'll bring it back. First point of business is, in the old business, we have a RP master plan amendment for Wild Horse Ridge, MP 25-005. I believe JD has that. Will we be covering both that and item three at the same time?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. Good evening, all. Yes, this is an old item that we discussed in our October 8th Planning and Zoning meeting. I'm just gonna go over what this proposal is. So this is, project is for RP District Master Plan Amendment and Primary Plaid Amendment for the remaining piece of the Wild Horse Ridge subdivision. The subdivision is located west of Union and south of West 12th Street. The request here is to amend the phasing plan, street layout on the RP District Master Plan. And the other piece of the request is to amend the Primary Plaid for the remaining phases, which is Wild Horse 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th Edition to match what the master plan is. And the proposed amendment will allow the applicant to proceed with construction of the remaining phases. Just a bit background, this property is on RP zoning. The entire master plan is on the right side. The entire development was to be done, is to be done in 10 phases, of which six of them are already built out and constructed. The only remaining pieces are 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th. And at present, we are looking for amendment for the 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th. The current master plan that we have on file, this was done in 21, 2021. The current master plan provides a north-south connection, which is Lariat Lane, that provides connection to West 12th Street and allows people to connect to West 12th Street. There was one street stub, Calso Code, proposed to the, to the western property boundary as shown on the yellow arrow to the west. And then a total of 146 lots were proposed in 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th Edition, of which 8th and 9th Edition also included bi-attached units. At the time of the amendment of the master plan in 2021, we had a development procedures agreement also amended that gave specific guidelines on what the building design of the bi-attached unit should be. So all those were clarified as part of the development procedures agreement. And then I wanted to recap to our October 8th Planning and Zoning meeting. There were several comments from Planning and Zoning Commissioners, as well as the public. There were five things that we wanted to review back. One was about functioning of stormwater management, which the developer's engineer is here today to explain that. Once I'm done with my presentation. There was park space that commission wanted the developer to look into. So the developer has looked into it and has provided 2.25 acre of park space, which we'll be discussing later in the slides. Besides that, the increased traffic on West 12th and Union Road is something that Commissioners wanted some updates on, which we have city engineer here who will be able to share that. And then eastern stub to A1 Zone property, which was, staff did check with the owner of the property. The owner indicated that they are supportive of the project and the street layout, as it will be more beneficial for them to, for future development of that lot. So we did check with the parcel owner, and they were supportive of us. I would request city engineer Matt Tolan to explain brief about the increased traffic on West 12th Street and Union Road, and as well as provide updates on the West 12th Street improvements for Commissioners and the public. Thank you.
Thank you, JD. Yeah, just want to talk about West 12th Street and Union Road. In regards to traffic, we are looking at, you know, 12th Street and Union Road are two major arteries in the city. They're designed with limited access points. We feel the development that's being proposed in the future phases, those roadways can't improve, or I'm sorry, that those roadways have the capacity to handle that level. With that said, the city already has in place improvements for Union Road in the corridor. So over the next five years, you'll see improvements to the Union Road corridor, including improvements at First and Union. They're slated for next year with IODOT. Following that will be Union and 27th Street and Union. South of there as well will be improved over time in the next five years. In the next two years, we're anticipating rebuilding West 12th Street. That was an agreement made between the developer and the city. For each acre that's developed, the developer's been placing set aside amount of dollars to help rebuild West 12th Street. The engineering department's currently looking at rebuilding West 12th Street from Columbine Drive to the west, to the, to the westerly boundary of the city limit. The engineering department, we have a request into council right now to extend that all the way out to Union Road. So we're looking to rebuild 12th Street from Union Road all the way out to the west city line. And that would include improvements such as pedestrian accommodations with trail and sidewalk, storm sewer improvements to the corridor, and we'd be repaving the whole corridor with concrete streets.
Thank you, Matt. So moving on, yeah, I wanted to just clarify, those were a couple of things that Planning and Zoning Commissioners requested. Now I'll just dive into a little bit of what the proposed master plan has changed after those comments. So with this new master plan, there will be a north-south street, Lariat Lane, that provides connection to West 12th Street, as highlighted in the orange dashed area. There will be total of four street stubs that will be added to the western property line, as indicated by the arrows to the west. And then there will be a street stub extending to east, to the A1 Zone property. And then a 2.25 acre park space will be added, as well as, as shown in the green area, which will be in the seventh phase. And there will be updated right away with, for 66 feet, to all the new street stubs and the area south of the T intersection. And a total of 136 lots will be built in 7th, 8th, and 9th and 10th additions with bi-attached units in 8th and 9th, as shown on the plat. The building setback for all the lots would be 25 feet everywhere, except for the corner lots, wherein it is 25 feet from primary front and 20 feet for the secondary front. They are all delineated on the plat. All the side yard setback is going to be 5 feet, and rear yard setback is going to be 30 feet. There is 35 feet perimeter setback, wherein no structures are permitted. It's all noted on the plat. All the lot sizes for both single-family and bi-attached unit confirms to what the requirement is for the zoning standards. Here is a park space. This will be a 2.25 acre park space, which will be dedicated to the city in the seventh addition, which will, which is the next phase. Developer will be responsible for construction of sidewalk along the park frontage. I forgot the name of the street where it runs, but yeah, the developer will be responsible for construction of the sidewalk. This is roughly the same acreage as we would calculate with the new park dedication formula. So I think that was coming down to 2.3. This is 2.25, so roughly close. Staff has noted, and the drawings have changed since we prepared the packet for you guys. In the packet, you may have seen that the park space had stormwater and drainage easements on the back. Now it's all gone. It's all on the, the abutting properties, as we requested. We wanted the park to remain free and clear of any easements, except electrical easement that will be along the park frontage to provide electrical services in future. But yeah, anyway, so that's the park space. Regarding the street layout, as you could see, the previous master plan only had one street stub extending to the west. And with recent street connectivity ordinance, the developer will be bringing the entire development into more compliance than what it has been, meaning there will be four street stubs that will be extended to the undeveloped property to the west. And a street extended to, an eastern stub, street stub to be extended to the A1 Zone property, all of which will have utilities as well, which will help the future areas to be built easily. And then besides that, a through block sidewalk will be also added between Lariat Lane and Sandstone Lane to address the longer block length. The block length for Lariat Lane right now is about 925 feet. And as per our code, any block length that exceeds 600 feet, they are required to provide a through block pedestrian sidewalk connection, which will be handy in here. That way, it allows people living on Lariat Lane to allow access to park through a shorter With regard to this plat, there is, there will be a traffic calming measure, which will be narrowing down the street width from 31 to 26 feet. This will be at the T intersection of Lariat Lane and Wild Horse Ridge, sorry, Wild Horse Drive. And then the updated right-of-way, which was again, code update, that was recently done, to have a 66 feet of right-of-way. This will be all done for those highlighted red sections. This will be helpful in accommodating the utilities, street trees in those areas as part of the new code. We were not able to get the entire development to get that work, because this plat, this has been plotted since 2005, and, but these are the areas which will be helpful in future There are still some technical comments that staff is working, and I've had a list of things in my staff report. Most of the things are already done and updated, but there are, there is one signed developmental procedures agreement that will need to be signed by the developer before this case is being considered with city council. And also, the deed of dedication for the Primary Plaid will need to be finalized by including adding language about the park acceptance and the maintenance of the Outlet B, which is the through block sidewalk connection, and any, any minor updates that are needed on the plat to take care of the requirements. Those, all things are being currently worked out, and hopefully we'll have those finalized soon. But with that, staff recommends approval of the proposed revisions of the RP master plan and the Primary Plaid, subject to all technical comments, as highlighted in the staff report, and any comments or directions specified by PNZ. We have developer's engineer here today. They can answer the stormwater questions that was asked the last time, but I'm here to answer any questions I have for the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, JD. Does anyone from the commission have any questions for staff?
I have a question. JD, can you please clarify? In the packet, it says that the developers including 2.29 acres of land for the dedicated park, but in your presentation, you said 2.25.
Yes. So at the time when we got the revisions done, and I know we have been working back and forth, it was 2.29 acres with easements. So now the easements are moved over, and the park is a lot more straightened than those curves, because it was difficult to manage those curves for future property owners. So now it's more straightened and more manageable, which is why there's the difference of the acreage. But the final is 2.25 acres. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I forgot to note that Parks Commission will be looking at this proposal at their next meeting. I think it's tomorrow. They have a special meeting to discuss this, to make a consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item at all?
Good evening. Adam Daters with CGA Engineers, 5106 Nordic Drive here in Cedar Falls. I think, besides all the information JD presented, I think he asked us to get up here and speak to the stormwater questions we had at the last meeting. I believe the, it primarily centered around the tract, that is, that triangular detention tract that's off of West 12th Street there. It's really serving as an intermediate upstream detention pond to capture some of the developed runoff or existing runoff north of 12th. It'll temporarily hold that in kind of a, just an intermediate holding area, dry detention pond. And the purpose of that was to be able to route a larger storm event through this subdivision. So once the stormwater leaves this triangular detention pond, some of the storm sewer downstream has been upsized to accommodate that larger flow, and then it will eventually get routed into the existing pond you see there, that was built with first, first edition. But I, just to reiterate and stress, you know, that, that is designed to be a dry detention area, you know, mode maintained, you know, to avoid any kind of maintenance issues or, or, you know, just kind of the, the wet areas that tend to develop in these places. But being in the proximity and the prior concerns that were brought forth, you know, we'll be sure when, when it comes time to design that specific area, to make sure it has adequate grading. Engineer does a great job with, with review and oversight of that as well.
And who has responsibility for the maintenance of that?
I believe that is part of the, the Wild Horse, Wild Horse Ridge. I think a separate association kind of gets put together for that, but it is on the, of the, the community, the, the property owners within that HOA, that development.
Any other questions?
If the city wants to start owning and maintaining private detention. No? Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come and speak to this item? Please come to the microphone and name an address for the record, please.
Jeremy Swanson, 904 Cherrywood Drive. I would like to speak about the size of the park. I thank you, first of all, for making sure that that got included into the plan. I just wanted to point out the size of some of the other neighborhood parks that we have in Cedar Falls. Orchard Hill Park is eight acres. The Green Hill Park, where Place to Play is, is five acres. Pfeiffer Park is 10 acres. Holmes Park is five acres. And of course, there's other parks, but many of these parks fall in older neighborhoods, such as Clay Street Park is one, one acre, and Sealy Park is two acres. With the data that I saw from the packet, I used the, the number of 187 lot, or units that, which I actually think is probably incorrect at this point, but if we took all of Wild Horse and use the equation that was suggested at our last meeting, that would suggest at least four and a half acres of park. And I think that the members, the people that live there, you know, I don't think in the future they're gonna say, gosh, I wish we had less green space. Because once that green space is developed, it's very hard to get it back to green space. So I'd just like you to consider upping the amount of acreage, acres for the park, to let those kids and the neighborhoods around them enjoy some green space for many years to come. Thank you.
Julianne Weaver, 4416 West 12th Street. Thank you, and thank you for putting in the park. I'm totally with Jeremy Swanson. According to the rule, whatever the layout that you guys approved 10 minutes before last week's meeting on this particular development, the park should be larger. And this won't go anywhere, but why don't you take out the east road going in my backyard and put the park, the rest of the park there? That would be super. Since that won't happen, I do appreciate that there is a green space planned for that space, for that neighborhood, because as he has said in the last meeting, Birdsall Park is overrun with lots of people and kids, and there's nowhere for this side of town to go. So that's the park. The water, I know it was just addressed for that retention pond in that triangle area. Is, is there a plan? I don't know if this is the developer or the city. The, the current water, like drainage, I don't know the words, you guys, but the drainage that's coming from North 12th, underneath the road right now, I mean, it's a swamp, and those, when it rains hard, those pipes are not pipes, you know, those things, they are not designed to hold the amount of water that we're getting on a regular rainy, like this summer was so rainy, it was swampy the whole summer long. My tractor got stuck trying to mow, my neighbor's tractor got stuck trying to mow, and I had to have two different men come out and pull me out, one of which was my husband, but the other one was a city worker that happened to kindly be passing by and pulled me out. So it's so wet, those things are not designed, and so I don't know if there's, are we expanding the, what are they called? Those?
Culverts.
Culvert, what, it's, it's, it's the, the, the concrete things, you know, the circle concrete. Are we expanding the size of that before we start developing the West 12th Street road and, and putting, taking it out of gravel and, you know, because once you guys put it down into concrete or, you know, a road, it's gonna be a lot harder to tear that out and deal with the flooding that will happen if the current drainage remains, which is not sufficient, hardly even at all, to deal with what's there. We have three sump pumps and a backup, and we used all four of them this whole spring and summer to drain our yard. And we don't have that much going on, so it's just a house. I think that's it. Thank you for putting in a park space. This is gonna be a ton of families coming over here, and this is a big deal to put in a park space, especially in a town like ours, where we are really excited about green space. I'm not from, I have to say that I'm not from Iowa, I'm not from this town, but my kids are, and I love that in the future, if they come back to visit mom and dad, hopefully there will be a place for them to come and play. Thank you, and thank you to the engineers.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak to this item? Come on up.
Ryan Weaver, same address as Julianne. Am I allowed to ask questions and get answers, or do I just have to say things?
Great question. You can certainly ask questions. What we try and do is kind of compile them all, and then after public comment, then we'll ask the different parties to give an answer.
I missed the last meeting, and it's been a while, and I've probably forgotten if this is already answered, but I'm looking at the laptop here with this, with this map. So on 12th Street, oh, thank you. What's the plan for sidewalks there? That's, that traffic is gonna be ridiculously busy. It's, it's already bad when the kids are coming home from high school, but if anybody lives in that corner up there, they're not gonna go through the neighborhood. They're gonna take Union and turn left on 12th. And now there's gonna be kids in the equation. Right now, there's not really, but there will be. So what's the sidewalk plan? And how does that work with the water management? Because you'd be putting sidewalks right over where the water's supposed to be going. And then to that dry detention pond, am I understanding that correctly, that it's mostly just gonna be grass most of the time? Except for when there's heavy rain, and then it'll fill up and then go away?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that proposed little stub there that, that we were talking about, that would go just to the south of our property, the other question is, would there be sidewalks on both sides of that street? I know it's a hypothetical street, so would there be hypothetical sidewalks on that hypothetical street? street? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and speak to this item? All right, seeing none, I think we can bring it back. Would the commission have comments right away, or maybe we could get a couple of answers to some of the questions that were first posed?
I can, yeah, I can answer some of those questions. So, 12th Street, so 12th Street is going to be a full reconstruction, so that means everything in the roadway is going to be coming up. We're going to switch it from what is a rural cross-section, which is a paved concrete road with ditches on either side. The roadway will physically be dropped. We'll add curb and gutter, we'll add storm sewer to it, and we'll add a new culvert system where that current cattle passes, the current culvert, so it'll be a new culvert system underneath the roadway. And then along 12th, it'll actually be a new storm sewer system with sub drains in there as well. So that will all be improved with West 12th Street. The question of connectivity for pedestrian, we're still looking at how that's going to function, but essentially, probably have sidewalk on both sides behind the back of curb, and we'll make connections back to what is the Union Road Trail System up on Union and 12th intersection, so there'd be some intersection rework there as well. But the plan for 12th Street would be basically completely reworked and brought into an urban cross-section, just like any other city street in town. In regards to the street stub in the development, all city streets are 31-foot with sidewalk. That sidewalk wouldn't be put in until a house is built and the adjacent property owner has to put it in, or after five years, the developers has to put it in. But any adjacent road has sidewalk on it?
So just to clarify, then, when it's extended, the hypothetical street is extended in the future, if that property owner wants to develop, it's a different property owner than this developer, but if he would like to develop in the future, that roadway would then be continued, and it would also have to meet city standards with sidewalks on both sides. And Matt, just to clarify with the stormwater management, I think the question was, will the stormwater system be sized then according to handle the stormwater runoff that is happening under 12th Street now? It'll be resized to accommodate?
Yeah, that's correct. So, the basin itself is designed for what comes underneath 12th and the adjacent system right there. As Adam was saying, it's going to be a dry detention, so those are basically just depressed areas that are mowed and usually kept to a six-inch grass height mode a couple times a year. And then, there's no water that actively stays in the bottom. It's a dry basin, think of like a bathtub, but in that bathtub scenario, when we do get a large rain event, water would come through the culvert, it would fill up momentarily, and then it would slowly meter out, like pulling the plug in a bathtub, just slowly meter out, but it would go dry again after the rain event within 24 hours or so.
And with regard to the question about the sidewalks and the pedestrian connections along 12th Street, and that would happen with the reconstruction, but we're trying to make that coincident at the same time, or slightly before the developer gets to that portion of their development, they're doing it in phases. So when that phase that connects to 12th Street happens, they'll have an improved 12th Street corridor already available, so, you know, the pedestrian facilities and the roadway will all be improved to handle the traffic and to handle pedestrians.
All right, we can bring it back to the commission to see if there are any comments or other questions on this item.
Could you maybe let us know how many lots were lost with the new parkland dedication compared to what was before?
You had to change, right?
Yeah, so I think it was, the last plan that we saw, it was 140 lots, and now we are seeing is 136 lots.
Okay.
So in the vicinity of where the park is going, it was a net decrease of five lots, but after looking at some other locations within the subdivision, we were able to add one more lot kind of further to the southwest. So subdivision-wide, net loss of four, but in this vicinity, it was a net loss of five.
Thank you.
I will say, on the note of the parkland, I, first of all, do appreciate that you all came back and were able to amend the plan and add in some green space. I think that that will be a really great addition to the development. I will say, though, considering the amount of lots that's in this area and what's going in, I do agree, I think that the acreage for this park is very low, and I still think that we're going to see pretty detrimental effects on Birdsall Park and just maybe some other areas across town as well. But it would be really great to see a bit more park space still within this development.
I'm a little torn. I do agree 100% that it would be nice to have more park space, and when I think about it, I also feel like unfortunately, when the rest of this very large development was put in, that was not a piece of it. And if we could turn back time, it would be wonderful to have five acres or six acres. And I also think, sort of in fairness to the developer, they're not developing all that other part right now. That's kind of done, that ship has sailed a little bit, so I appreciate that the developer was willing to give the two and a quarter, give or take. And while it would be great if it was more, I think we kind of need to think about what is the development we're looking at, and to go back and say, "Shame on someone else for not putting in more park space," feels a little odd to me. So... Are there any other comments or questions on it? Otherwise, we could entertain a motion at all?
And just to clarify, per the original agreement, zero park space is required, correct?
When the original subdivision was planted, there wasn't any park space designated with that plat. That's correct. Now, they did have a big green space in the development with their stormwater pond, so it's a wet stormwater pond. I think the people in the neighborhood appreciate that, and there's a trail. That's all private, it's not a public park, but the people, I think, do use that as an amenity for the neighborhood. So I don't, I can't look back in time and know what the thinking was at the time, but that could have been part of the consideration, is this, they created this private space, amenity space. But like I said, we don't really know what the thinking was at the time when this, I think that was originally in 2005, so, you know, some time ago.
And I completely agree. I mean, obviously, originally, that wasn't part of the plan, and I do understand that at this point, part of the development has already been built out, and I do, again, appreciate that we are adding in park space at this point in time. I just, I think when all is said and done, this will be a regret, and I'm kind of in the camp, like, we just went through our Parks Master Plan and heard a lot of community comment, and I think if we know better, we have a responsibility to be doing better, and if there is an opportunity to make change, I think now's the time to do it. So, I'm just a Parks advocate up here, and I think that, again, to the point of the person that gave public comment earlier, I don't think that anybody in this development or anybody visiting the neighborhood in the future is going to look back and say, like, "Oh, I wish they would have taken out half of this green space," or whatever it may be. So I just wanted to advocate for that as we go through plans and start to utilize some of the information that's come out in the last year for parks.
I guess JD and Karen, to clarify, if we were just looking at the divisions that are being proposed tonight for the preliminary plats and doing the calculation, what parkland, is it the four acres that has been said, or was that looking at the development as all of Wild Ridge as a whole?
I think, I think it was for, so if we look at what they are proposing in the last four additions which are remaining to be built, it's 136 lots. Based on that, I think it's coming down to 2.3 acres as per the formula, but yeah, I think considering like all 10 additions, it might be more, so, yeah.
But to be fair, if, you know, this parkland bill has already been passed to the letter of the law, they're pretty close to meeting, based on developments, or Division 6 through 10, to meeting the parkland requirement, if we're not considering the whole development that's already been.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, I don't know, just to make that point.
We have a request for further comment. Is that typical, or is it public?
Well, unless you close the public comment, I guess.
I didn't say it, did I?
It's up for you to...
Sure, come on up.
Thank you. I appreciate, like, oh, this is just this new development, but they are connecting it to the old development, and so when you take it as a whole, it should be a larger park also. In how Jeremy kind of referenced, like, the Place to Play Park, that is kind of tucked into that neighborhood, the whole town uses it. We go over and use it. We, you know, the whole town uses neighborhood parks, so it's not like this is this hidden gem, and everybody loves a new park, so more green space is A. And B, Midwest Development has a lot of developments in this town. I feel like, I'm not them, but I feel like it would be okay to give up, like, 10 more houses or something to allow for more green space. I know you'd probably hate me for that, but that's just kind of what I feel like as a resident of this town, and also, it is connecting to the other neighborhoods, so yes, we can't go back in time, but we can do better with the ordinance that was passed last week or last time. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. I think the applicant would like to speak again?
Oh, don't worry, I don't hate you for anything. And these are tough conversations to have. I completely agree, I think the Midwest Development would agree as well. I, you know, I do have to reiterate, though, that, you know, this is an application for the remainder of this development, and as such, you know, if a different developer were to come in and purchase the property from Midwest Development, they would be held to that same requirement for the park space, so just wanted to put that out, so, thank you.
Thank you. So I believe our options, if we wanted to have someone make a motion, that could at least provide a vote.
So we have two votes to take here. The first vote would be on the change to the master plan, and these are kind of the same, you know, the first ones, the RP master plan amendment. We vote on that one, and then you would vote on the change to the plat.
Yes, correct.
To be consistent with that master plan.
Separate.
Two separate votes, so we need a motion and a second on the master plan amendment.
And the motion and the second are just to bring them for a vote, and then the vote itself is independent?
Right, right, so motion and, motion and second for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the master plan.
I'll second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alberhaski.
Aye.
Grubovich.
Aye.
Hartley, oh, sorry, Mr. Hartley's not here. Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnaker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Then next, we would need a separate motion for the preliminary plat amendment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Nay.
Sorry, nay?
Yes.
Grubovich.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnaker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay, well, those will move on to the city council then for consideration.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is in new business. We have a vacation of a portion of Hudson Road, and I believe Michelle has this one.
Correct, thank you. The vacation for the portion of Hudson Road is located off of Hudson, south of West Ridgeway So when looking at the criteria for a vacation, we would look at to see if the right-of-way is needed for public use. This is a vacant piece of land within the right-of-way, and it's currently being farmed. The access to the private property, there's no access to this property, the property would be accessed once the plat is approved for the internal road, Gibson Loop Road. And then the third criteria is if there's any utilities. There's no known utilities in this right-of-way, and staff, based on those findings, staff recommends approval, and I'm available for any questions.
So just for some context here, the city did some exchange with the Iowa DOT and the right-of-way here, so we acquired that strip of right-of-way from the Iowa DOT, so the city owns the property right now. We'd like to vacate that right-of-way to be able to add it to the lot in the adjacent subdivision that the city is preparing.
And as shown on the screen, that is the plat that we were talking about.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from the commission? And is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item at all? Not seeing any, so we'll bring it back. Any discussion, or otherwise, we could entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve vacation.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alberhaski.
Aye.
Grubovich.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Stahlnaker.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that passes as well. Next up, we have a Mitchell Minor plat, and I believe Chris has this one.
Yes, thank you. The resident and owner of the duplex at 3814 East Park Road and 924 Elmerich Drive is seeking to subdivide the property to convert the duplex into two single-family bi-attached units. For context, the subject property is just south of Orchard Drive in the neighborhood between Southdale Elementary and Orchard Hill Church. The proposed minor plat is comprised of Lot 1 of Briarwood Hills Third Edition and is within an RP-planned residence district. The Briarwood Hills Third plat was approved in February 1990. The duplex on Lot 1 was constructed in 2006. You can see the duplex up on the screen, and here's the, an overlay of the, if it'll come up, there we go, overlay of the proposed minor plat. So, the minimum lot size for bi-attached dwellings in the RP-planned residence district follows the same rules as the R4 residence district, which is 4,000 square feet. There are no specified lot with requirements in the RP residence district, and the proposal meets that minimum lot size. Parcel AR, which is the one on the left side of this plat, has 4,357 square feet, and then parcel AS on the right side has 7,371 square feet. The required setbacks for the RP district are 15 feet from the property line off of Elmerich Drive and 25 feet from the property line off of East Park Road. These are, these setbacks are also shown on the proposed plat. Just a couple other... I'll just, I should mention that a mailing did go out for this. We did have a couple of comments from people just in support of this, and so just wanted to let you know. Staff also reviewed this and recommends approval with the following, well, with the stipulation that any comments directed by the Planning Zone Commission be followed and conformance with all city staff recommendations and technical requirements. And so if you have no questions or concerns, I think it's appropriate to, or staff believes it's appropriate to, to provide a recommendation to city council. And with that, I turn it back to the commission.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff from the commission? Would the applicant like to speak to this at all tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any public comments about this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. Seems pretty straightforward to me. If, I mean, if the general consensus from any communication was positive, and the city believes this is a good idea, seems sensible. We would entertain a motion if anybody's interested.
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. So roll call vote, please.
Alberhaskey, aye. Grupovich, aye. Johnson, aye. Moser, aye. Stahlnecker, aye. Watkins, aye. That motion carries, and so this will be then forwarded to city council.
Thank you. Next up, I believe Chris is going to speak again to CHN Design Review for a detached garage at 1917 Franklin Street.
Yes, thank you. So the applicant is seeking to build a new 24-by-24 detached garage on the property at 1917 Franklin Street. The existing shed at the end of the driveway there, I mean, go to this. At the end of the existing driveway will be demolished to make room for the new detached garage. Driveway pavement will be replaced as part of this project, but not anticipated change in footprint. So, sorry. The subject property is located within the RT Residence Zoning District and the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay. As per the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay, the new construction of a detached accessory structure over 300 square feet in base floor area within the district is termed as a substantial improvement, which requires review and approval by the Planning Zone Commission and the city council. So let's go over a couple things here. The site plan shows that this garage is 24 by 24, so 576 square feet. It is shown with a setback of at least two feet from the side lot line, which is permissible for any detached accessory structure with base floor area of less than 600 square feet. This particular lot, being only 50 feet wide, is able to have up to 675 square feet of detached accessory structure cumulative. Since the existing 120-square-foot shed is being removed as part of this project, the 576-square-foot structure is permissible. The structure will also be 34 feet from the rear lot line and 29 feet from the principal structure. These details of their proposal comply with the standards outlined in the standards related to detached accessory structures in our code. I'll talk real quick about the architectural style. So the primary architectural criteria in the overlay is that the garage be compatible with the principal structure. The existing principal structure features a gabled design with an intersecting entry on the front. The proposed garage features a similar gabled roof with a roof pitch similar to the principal structure. While the design of the garage is simple and straightforward, it appears to sufficiently meet the intent of the architectural criteria. A couple other things. Building materials, they should match the principal structure as closely as possible. The existing principal structure features asphalt shingles with gray vinyl siding. The letter of intent indicates that the proposed vinyl siding and asphalt shingles will match those used on the principal structure. And then also, just a note about neighborhood character, detached garages that are recessed from the front build line of the house are fairly typical in the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay and are certainly more typical than attached garages. Noting that there is no alley on this block from which to arrange parking, the applicant's proposal appears to be compatible with the neighborhood character. And with that, staff recommends approval of this case. The College Hill Design Review for New Garage at 1917 Franklin Street, subject to any comments or direction specified by the Planning Zone Commission. And with that, I turn it back to the commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Otherwise, would the applicant like to speak to this at all tonight? Are there any public comments? Anyone from the public like to speak to it? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Alberhaskey, aye. Grupovich, aye. Johnson, aye. Moser, aye. Stahlnecker, aye. Watkins, aye. Okay, that motion carries.
All right. So the next up, we have another College Hill Neighborhood Design Review, this time for a new stoop at 1906 Iowa.
Yes, I'll take that one as well. Thank you. The applicant is seeking to build a new stoop on the facade of the house at 1906 Iowa Street. The stoop is proposed to have a footprint of four feet by six feet, so not a very large stoop per se. And it would have fascia made of composite decking material that is, oh, decking and fascia, made of composite decking material that is resistant to weathering. Staff did issue permits for other work described in the applicant's letter of intent, where designer review was not required, since they met the criteria for regular maintenance and/or did not constitute a significant change. So the previous concrete stoop was removed earlier this year when the applicant did foundation work for proper access to the front door. A temporary stoop has been installed, which matches the design of the permanent stoop that they plan to install in spring 2026. You can see a picture of the old concrete stoop and the temporary stoop up on the screen. The subject property is located in the R2 Residence Zoning District. As per the College Hill Neighborhood Overlay, a change of materials and design on this kind of facade element is considered a substantial improvement, which requires review and approval by the Planning Zone Commission and City Council. Neighborhood character is the primary consideration for facade change like this. And so we'll talk about that real quick. Let's see. There's quite a bit of variation in the neighborhood for how stoops come off of the front entry of homes. On the screen, you'll see pictures of examples nearby on the same street as this one. Some are concrete, and many are made of painted wood or weather-resistant composite product like the one the applicant is proposing. Some have railings, and some have no railing. Note that a railing is required for any stoop or deck with a floor height at or above 30 inches. Staff notes that many of these examples have green shrubbery right next to the stoop, shrubbery next to the old concrete stoop on the subject property. You can see in the picture up there, there's some greenery next to the old stoop. It needed to be removed earlier this year to make way for the foundation work that was done. With that, staff suggests perhaps a condition of approval, that a landscape plan be submitted prior to issuance of a permit for the stoop, showing similar shrubbery or other appropriate plantings installed in the planting areas adjacent to the stoop. And you can see what it looks like today up on the screen. No plantings right now at present with the temporary stoop up there. With that, staff recommends approval of this case, an application for a design review for a new stoop at 1906 Iowa Street, subject to any comments or direction specified by the Planning Zone Commission. With that, I turn it back to the commission.
Thank you. And are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, can you clarify, forgive my ignorance, but why this is a substantial improvement? How this qualifies as a substantial improvement?
So what it talks about in the overlay is that the materials need to be same or similar. Switching from a concrete stoop to a, you know, to composite decking certainly is that kind of change that the overlay would trigger.
So it has to do with the material, not the, okay.
Correct.
But probably the design as well. So any times you change in the design, something that's visible from the street on the exterior, that's one of the things that we're trying to work on with the new College Hill code coming up, is so that there's a little, you know, more specificity in the code regarding these standards, and then we won't have to bring everything through the commission and the council. So that's one of the things we're trying to do, so that these small cases don't have to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. I was thinking similar. Would the applicant like to speak to this at all? Or would anyone from the public like to? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
I think it looks like a really nice improvement. So I would make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second.
Okay. Just to clarify, are we making a motion without the shrubbery contingency? Or does that have to be specified in the motion? I believe it would need to be specified in the motion.
Correct.
So then I'll amend my motion. I'll make a motion to approve this item pending the contingency that their landscaping be approved. Is that accurate? Okay, yes.
I'll second that new motion.
All right, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Alberhaskey, aye. Grupovich, aye. Johnson, aye. Moser, aye. Stahlnecker, aye. Watkins, aye. Okay, thank you. That will go on to council then.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda items tonight. Are there any updates for the commission?
I don't have anything, updates for you tonight. I failed to mention last week that it was Mr. Sorensen's last meeting. He was serving a partial term and has decided he didn't want to re-up. So I didn't want to leave that, and I meant to thank Mr. Sorensen for his service. And so I'm doing that publicly on TV here. So thank you, Mr. Sorensen, for your service.
Yes, agreed. With that, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and have a great evening.